So move, second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Inanimate Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you.
Thank you for patiently waiting, I apologize, we ran over today. Hopefully, we can get it back on track here. If everyone would stand, Mr. Lathan, if you'd lead us in the pledge, please.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to our, anyone who wishes to speak before the board, Ms. Burden, do we have anyone tonight?
Yes, we do. The Wayne County Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the education program, or school facilities. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest from the public. However, obscene, vulgar, or profane statements and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or infinitely threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. An organization or delegation representing the same topic is encouraged to select one individual to make a presentation on its behalf. Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentations will generally not be acted upon at the time it is received, but will be considered for potential action in the normal course of business. Individuals with concerns or complaints are strongly encouraged to initially seek a response from the school district official responsible for the program or facility, or from the superintendent. Any person who wants to distribute written materials or handouts to the board is directed to leave those items at the speaker's podium for the board's clerk to retrieve and deliver to the board members. This evening, we have Octavia Groves, 292 Jerry Road, Selma, North Carolina. Wayne County Public Schools bus drivers, and the summary of the topic is bus drivers concerned.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am a bus driver for Wayne County, and I have been a bus driver here for six years, and it's a lot of stuff that's going on that the bus drivers are concerned about as far as bus driver safety. When we're out on the road, we understand that it's taking us longer to get kids home, and parents are becoming very frustrated with us. We done had several situations where we have to go to court against parents jumping on our bus, trying to be aggressive to us, and there's nobody for us to call after a certain time, or we have little kindergartners on the bus whose parents are not at the bus stop when we get there, and they're telling us we can't drop them off unless we see an adult, and several other bus drivers have looked through the policy and said they haven't seen anything that states that we're supposed to be present until somebody comes. And a lot of bus drivers are being told, go drop the kids off at the police station, and they're just not comfortable dropping a little kindergarten off at the police station with things like that. And we also have issues with certain schools with lighting, with us people being in the, out in the country schools, we don't have adequate lighting for when we're getting off the bus at like five and six o'clock, seven o'clock, and it's pitch black dark at our schools. We only have sensors light, and they're going off for instance. One of our bus drivers is like sixty years old, she's the last person to come in because she's doing the engineering school, and she's by herself out there in the dark, and a lot of people try to call her to make sure that she's okay by the time she get off the bus. And it's the issue with the mags. Ever since, we, y'all, the policy has changed for them to have to wear the mags on the bus. A lot of parents now, they think, oh, the board said they don't have to wear the mask. So it was a confrontation with the school telling them, well, they have to wear it on the bus, and the parents like, well, I don't have no mask for my child to wear to school. And they like, oh, well, put them on the bus and just let them sit behind the bus driver, and then when you get to school, give them over to the principal. But at the same time, it's like, you're putting everybody at risk of COVID. And I work at the hospital, so I understand what it is. And it's a real bad concern for me because I have a grandmother that I haven't seen in two years because I'm scared because I work at the school and I work in the hospital. So at the same time, it's like, I feel like we need more backing from the school system, our principals, assistant principals, because when we say something to them, it's just like, well, what do y'all want us to do about it? And I'm just like, what's the point of us having a rule if you're not going to enforce it on them and make them do it? Or we have to deal with parents that want to get in confrontations and holler and scream at us because we saying, your child has to wear a mask, it's mandated for them to wear it on the bus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no changes to the agenda? Need a motion to approve the agenda as is?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Inanimate Mr. Schwartz. Ms. Rouse, it's time for Wayne County Public Schools financial audit report.
Good evening, I have Adams Purick with Anderson Smith and White. They'll be presenting the financial audit for Wayne County Public Schools for the 2020-21 school year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, my name is Adams Purick, I'm a partner with Anderson Smith White. The independent auditors that you have contracted with along, it's a three-party contract between us, the school system, and the local government commission to provide the audit of management. And I'm here to go over the audit report, as well as a three-page letter that was provided to you, letting you know how the audit went. As of this time, the audit has been submitted to the local government commission for their review, but has not been reviewed yet. They're about a month behind on their reviews, so. Anyway, like I said, there's a three-page letter also with the financial statement booklet. Again, being the governing body that hired us to do the audit, that letter just lets you know that there were no difficulties encountered in conducting the audit. The timing of the audit went as planned, according to our engagement letter and our planning documents with management. We come on site for two visits, one in the spring and then one in the fall to actually conduct basically two parts of the audit, a compliance part and a financial statement part. There were also no new financial accounting standards that were implemented in these statements. All those have been pushed back into the next year, 2022, so there'll be, I think, quite a few changes to the statements next year. There were no differences of opinion on how to apply accounting standards, and that's basically what that three-page letter says, just that the audit went according to plan and went well. And also was on time this year. We'll notice some significant differences from a year ago, some really, I think, spectacular changes, both in the statements and just the, conducting the audit in general. So if you would, turn, open up the bound seventy-five page set of statements. These seventy-five pages, every one of them is required, but not every one of them is important. The statements comply with all of the requirements issued by GASB, all of the auditing standards, all of the financial statement disclosures. It's full of information, but there's a couple pages that I think are the most important pages. So I was just going to go over those pages and point those out as we go. But if at any point you have questions about anything, feel free to let me know. Even if after the presentation you have any questions, my number is at the bottom of page two, which is the second page of our opinion letter. Feel free to call me at any time. We do school system audits year-round, and I'm always happy to talk about issued statements and answer any questions. So again, page one of this report is the independent auditor report. This is our opinion letter. And at the bottom of page one is our opinion paragraph, and it basically states that in our opinion, we believe that these financial statements are accurate and reflect the financial position of the school system for the year ended June thirty, 2021. This is what's considered a clean, unmodified opinion letter. So after the opinion letter is about ten pages of discussion and analysis of what I think of as two kind of sets of financial statements. Auditing standards require us to disclose and provide net position and also fund balance. So there's two sources of equity essentially. You have your accounting net position, which is important to accountants. It includes the value of your buildings. It includes the allocated cost of all your retirement benefits. So anybody that is a covered employee, you withhold retirement and send it to the state, and they amass that into a retirement plan, and they pay those retirement benefits directly to those individuals after they retire. So that's really a liability of the state. There's two real large components to that, there's the retirement piece, and then there's also the retirement health benefits, the OPEB, other post-employment benefits. You'll see OPEB throughout the statements quite a bit. But those two liabilities are really liabilities of the state, but your net position reflects your component of that, your percentage. Your small one percent of the entire state liability is actually reflected in the first two statements of your financial statements that show that net position. That creates this giant negative net position that does not really accurately reflect the financial position of the school board. So whenever you're reading through the management discussion and analysis, just take note as to whether you're reading about net position or fund balance. To me, fund balance is most important to management, most important to the governing body. It is based on your actual cash on hand, what you have available to allocate to budgets. That really is the number that shows your financial health, in my opinion. So again, whenever you see net position versus fund balance, just take note of what you're, what you're reading because you have a giant negative net position, but you actually have positive fund balance this year. So when you look at page eleven, exhibit one, this is the balance sheet, again, that reflects net position. Treating Wayne County schools as if you were a corporation, combining all of your funds into one balance sheet, including the value of those assets like your buildings, including- uh, including the value of those assets like your buildings, including the cost of those liabilities, like the pension liability and the OPEB liability there in the middle of the page. And your negative, your negative net position is a deficit of a hundred and seventy-three thou-, a hundred and seventy-three million dollars. Again, not truly reflective of the financial position because there's a large, two large liabilities that aren't really your liabilities. So when I look at these statements, page thirteen, exhibit three is really, to me, where to start. Though these, uh, this is the most important, uh, page, uh, in these statements, in my opinion. This is the balance sheet for your governmental funds by fund. So exhibit three, page thirteen, you have a column for each of your governmental funds, general state public school fund, federal grants, restricted revenue, capital outlay, and the individual school fund, the money at the individual schools that, uh, each of the schools has their own, uh, uh, cash account. So the first column, your general fund, your total fund balance at the bottom of that first column is eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, uh, an increase of five point nine million dollars from the previous year. One of the findings from the previous year was the fact that you had a negative general fund balance that has been cleared by the addition of five point nine million dollars of fund balance to that eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of current fund balance. Now, I will say that that fund balance is in the form of inventory. So, uh, fund balance is, is essentially equity. And if you have an asset, uh, in the form of inventory, that creates equity. So when you look at that eight hundred and forty-three thousand, up above it, the first portion of it is non-spendable, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars of inventory. That is cash already spent. It's been spent on light bulbs, uh, uh, equipment, uh, or, or repair equipment, doorknobs, anything and everything, tires for buses, that money's already been spent, so you can't budget that. You can't appropriate because that's in the form of items rather than cash. So you actually have to back that out of your fund balance when you look at what is available for appropriating. You also have to back out receivables. North Carolina law is written so that you cannot appropriate money that has not been received in the form of cash before year-end. So you have a little seven thousand dollar receivable outstanding at year-end. You collect that in July and August, but you can't appropriate that until the twenty twenty-three budget. So you actually have to back that out of fund balance. And so what you're left with is essentially a negative unassigned fund balance. That unassigned fund balance is truly what is available for appropriating. Now again, yours is negative thirteen thousand, that's about as close to zero as it can be without being zero. Uh, the law that, uh, or the issue with last year's finding was the total fund balance can't be negative. So it's okay that you have negative thirteen thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance. Obviously, we would all like to see that a little higher, uh, quite a bit higher. But the fact that it's negative thirteen thousand isn't really a finding, isn't a concern, um, as long as your total fund balance is positive. So you have, uh, cleared that finding with the addition of five point nine million dollars of fund balance. But at this time, you don't have any fund balance available to appropriate. It's, it's basically all been spent. So your general fund budget has to be equal to the actual revenues that you're going to receive, uh, this year. Are there any questions about that? Again, I, that, I, it was pretty, uh, uh, important topic last year. Um, I think it's important to note the, uh, the, you know, coming into positive territory. This year, uh, our firm, our firm audits, um, about sixty school districts. I'm involved in seventeen of them. Every district I've been at this year has added fund balance. Uh, there have been cost savings related to, uh, the pandemic. There has been the ability to, um, save money with the federal monies received. And so I've seen, uh, small districts to large, all adding fund balance this year. Anywhere from one million dollars to ten million dollars at some of the larger ones. So you being kind of right in the middle, that five point nine million dollars is not, uh, unexpected or unusual, uh, but it definitely came at the right time. So your state public school fund, your largest funding source, does not carry fund balance. So there's no fund balance in the state public school fund or the federal grants fund. You also have a restricted revenue fund that up until about, uh, ten years ago, when they created Fund Eight, the special revenue fund, these two funds would have been combined into one column. Uh, the general fund used to house your county appropriations, which is now what makes up the majority of the general fund, as well as several restricted funding sources like Medicaid, like NC pre-K, some special state and federal grants, as well as some, uh, non-special, uh, funding sources like indirect cost. You're able to charge federal programs an overhead charge for providing a finance department, an HR department. They pay a small percentage of indirect cost into your local funding. And, and those aren't restricted funds, but they are found within the restricted revenue fund. So there, there are some, uh, funding sources that aren't restricted, but we can't call the fund balance that those create, we can't call it unassigned. You're only allowed to have one unassigned fund balance and that's in the general fund. So your restricted revenue fund does have, uh, three point nine million dollars of fund balance, almost four million dollars of fund balance, an increase of one point three million dollars from the prior year. And again, a lot of that is made up of both restricted sources, money that has to be reinvested back into the program that's generating the revenue, like Medicaid or like NC pre-K, but also some non-restricted sources. So there is some fund balance available for appropriation in that fund. You also have two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of capital outlay fund balance and then one point four million dollars, uh, at the school levels. Again, for a total of six and a half million dollars combined fund balance. Any questions? All right, if you turn one page, this bottom half of exhibit three, this shows the reconciliation of how six and a half million dollars of fund balance becomes negative a hundred and seventy-three million dollars of net position. These are all the, um, ins and outs essentially. Uh, one of your findings last year was related to, um, accounting for, uh, fixed assets and for allocating pension and OPEB. So, um, the, uh, LGC and the state auditors provide information on how to allocate, uh, that this pension plans and those OPEB plans to Wayne County schools. But then within Wayne County schools, we have to allocate those between governmental and business. Your business fund being your child nutrition fund. In previous years or in the year, the year we picked up this audit a year ago, that allocation was just incorrect. It was, it was used, uh, I, I think it was using another district's percentage. So there was a correction there. And there was also some fixed assets, um, that were, uh, needed to be, uh, added to your fixed asset listing. So those numbers in between here, although while not important for managing the finances of the school system, are important to the statements and do have to be managed by the accounting department in the form of, uh, fixed asset reports, calculations for OPEB, reviewing the, those allocations. So, uh, the second finding that was cleared involved two line items within this allocation. Again, those, again, have been cleared. Um, all of the fixed asset listings are accurate at this point. The allocation between governmental and business is in line with your actual salaries. Uh, so again, uh, you had four findings last year, the second one being related to information in this recon. Those have all been cleared. Page fifteen, exhibit four, is the income statement for these governmental funds. It just shows you the amount of revenues coming into the school system. And also at the bottom of each of these columns, you can see that that, uh, change in fund balance. For the general fund, there was a five point seven million dollar increase in fund balance, as well as a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar increase in inventories. So those two numbers combined give us that five point nine million dollar number that we talked about on the balance sheet. Again, no change in fund balance but for the state public school fund and federal grants fund. But you can see that a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars is run through state and twenty-two million dollars through the federal grants fund. These include large dollars for CARES, ESER, uh, ESER Two. Uh, so some significant increases in revenues in the federal grants fund, but again, it carries no fund balance. Your restricted revenue fund, five point eight million dollars of revenues, four point five million dollars of expenditures. Your capital outlay fund, mostly a reimbursement basis. The county pays for some projects or reimburses you for projects. And so only a nineteen thousand dollar change in fund balance there. And then a twenty-six thousand dollar decrease in the individual school fund, fund balance. So you, uh, went from basically a negative seven million, or seven hundred thousand dollars of fund balance to that six point five, uh, total for the year. One of the common questions, uh, about how much fund balance do you need? When you look at your, uh, six point five million dollars combined and look at that as a percentage of your hundred and eighty-four million dollars that comes through in one year, you can, it kind of shows just how small six million dollars really is, uh, again, compared to a, a, an entire budget of a hundred and eighty-five million dollars. The, um, the makeup of your funding sources, twenty million dollars from local, hundred and thirty million dollars from state, uh, federal being twenty-two million dollars this year, probably even more next year. When you look at that makeup and I, when I look at your relative size to some of the other districts I work with, it'd be nice to see some type of a combined general and restricted fund balance of about eight to ten million dollars, just to help cover cash flows. Uh, in my experience, the, when you're using fund balance, it comes off a lot easier than it's added back. So being able to add five point nine million dollars in, in one year, I think, uh, went an extraordinary long way of, of, of turning things around and putting you on the path where you need to be. I wouldn't expect another five point nine million dollars next year. But, um, but we're seeing every district utilizing these federal funds, utilizing the cost savings, uh, from, you know, not transporting kids, uh, in the same manner that they did pre-COVID, uh, even just utility cost savings that were able to be recognized. Every district that, that I was working with used those, uh, the, those savings to add to fund balance with the anticipation that at some point the federal funds will run out, they will come to an end. Uh, there's going to be continuing long-term changes to the way school's done, whether it's being, uh, techno-, increases in technology. You're buying software that you maybe hadn't purchased in the past. There, there's going to be, uh, summer school remediation for some students for a long time to come. There's going to be future unknown costs that having fund balance and adding fund balance now will help, you know, lessen those burdens in the future. So, uh, again, being able to add five point nine million dollars in one year, I think definitely dug you out of a hole that you needed to be out of. And anything you can add in the next two years, I think will go a long way towards, uh, you know, those future unknown costs. Any questions on those governmental funds? So you also have a, uh, business-type fund. Page twenty-one, this is your school food service fund. Now, because this is a business fund and not a governmental fund, accounting policies, requirements require that the pension and OPEB benefits or liabilities related to child nutrition have to be reflected directly within this fund. So I talked about net position and fund balance as two different numbers for governmental. When we look at your school food service fund, net position and fund balance are the same number. So that means this net position of negative one million dollars is not the ideal way to discern how, uh, healthy is our child nutrition fund, our school food service fund. So for this fund, page twenty-one, I like to look at the cash at the top of the page. Four point six million dollars of cash on hand. Um, there is also a cash flow statement on page twenty-three, gives you a little bit more detail. But the summary here, um, cash went up two million dollars this year, but that's because you repaid a three million dollar loan from them. So their cash should have gone up three million dollars if they had broken even, but it went up two million. So there was actually a million-dollar usage of cash from operations, offset by a three million dollar payback. Obviously, providing meals, uh, remotely and then, uh, delivering a difficult task. There were significant declines in participation. So there was declines in food costs, but the, some of the salaries were still constant. So, um, a tough year, a tough way to provide students with meals during a pandemic. Thankfully, the, uh, reimbursement rates were higher because they were being fed under a, what was called a summer feeding program. Uh, so you had, uh, an uptick in the price per meal that you received, but the participation level just wasn't there and so you ended up using about a million dollars of cash. It's my understanding, um, now that with school being in session, still having higher reimbursement rates, you know, the participation is where it needs to be to, to get back to generating a profit or at least breaking even. So, um, luckily you had the, this was a healthy fund pre-pandemic and it's still a healthy fund after two years of it. So, um, four point six million dollars of cash on hand. Uh, again, the three million dollar loan being paid off. Uh, so part of the, part of having a negative fund balance means you owed basically five million dollars to, to somebody. Three million of it was to the child nutrition fund and two million of it was to DPI. Again, both of those being repaid, uh, with that five point nine million dollars added. Any questions there? So after, um, after that, there are twenty, thirty pages of footnotes, detailed information of accounts receivables, payables, uh, roll forwards of your fixed assets, ten pages devoted to just the actuarial calculations that go into the state's calculation of pension and OPEB liabilities. There's also, uh, some charts that show, um, the pension and OPEB liabilities over time. In one chart, I wanted to point out, uh, page fifty-three, this is a schedule of the last ten years of the, um, the retirement liability and your contractually required contribution to that retirement plan. So while you're not responsible for funding retirees' monthly payments, you do have to fund the retirement plan through payment of the retirement rate. That rate has gone up, uh, from, uh, seven point four four for retirement to fourteen point seven eight in the last ten years. Again, the retirement rate is not just this pension rate. You also have to include the, um, six, seven percent of post-employment benefits rate. So over twenty-two percent of every dollar spent on salaries has to be spent on retirement expenditures. In a district that has, uh, a lot of state funding, those, uh, retirement liabilities are, or payments are covered. You're, you're allotted a lot of your, uh, revenue for salaries based on positions. So when they say we'll cover an X amount of positions, they'll cover the position and all the corresponding benefits. But any salary paid with federal sources or with local sources, anytime that retirement rate goes up, that's more money you have to come up with to send to the retirement system. And when you're talking about, uh, twenty-two cents on the dollar. And when you're talking about 22 cents on the dollar for a local employee that you have to fund their retirement, it gets expensive real quick. And so you can see this past year, $14 million of retirement contributions just for the pension plan. And again, a lot of that is state-funded, but not all of it is. The other thing to look at here, your covered payroll. When you look at the 2021 covered payroll, $95 million of payroll compared to $101 million in 2020, that's a lot of where that savings is found, in those salaries, in those open positions. And I think that played a significant part in adding $5.9 million to fund balance. It's just looking at that change in salaries. There's also, after that, some schedules, and even, even before the footnotes, there's schedules showing the same funds, but budget versus actual. Your third finding was related to budget violations. You had no current year budget violations. Expenditures were under budget on each of your funds at the resolution threshold rate. So your resolution is passed at a, at a level and budget amendments are done as needed. Again, no budget violations in any of your governmental funds or the business-type fund. So that cleared finding number three. Page 62. I told you, again, at the beginning that there's kind of two components. We come in the spring, that's when we do a lot of our compliance testing, and then we come after year-end in the fall to do the financial statement portion of the audit. Page 62 begins three letters related to the compliance portion of our audit. There's three letters, two pages each. One of them is on internal controls over compliance and also financial reporting. One is over compliance with state requirements for your state major programs, and then one is for compliance with your federal program requirements for your federal major programs. The two opinion letters for state and federal, both clean, unmodified opinion letters, basically for all of the state and federal programs that we audited for compliance. We noted no findings, question costs, or deficiencies in controls over those programs. The internal control letter over financial statements noted no instances of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in controls over financial reporting. So in summary, three clean, unmodified opinion letters on compliance and internal controls. Page 68 shows you the federal programs that we audited as major. We did the EC cluster, the Supporting Effective Instruction, and your two sources of COVID-19 money, the education stabilization funds, which is made up of the CARES, ESER, ESER II, GEAR, and also your coronavirus relief funds that came through. Those, those actually came through the state public school fund, but they were federal funds. So those were the four programs that we audited as major. Because we had so many findings last year, we have to audit 40% of your federal dollars every year, and every program has to be audited at least once every three years. And COVID-19 money is considered higher risk, and so potentially has to be audited every year. So that's the coverage we had this year was these four programs. The state public school fund, your state program, that has to be audited as major every year. It makes up 95% of your state dollars. You also get some CTE money, some dry resed, some technology money. Those are smaller state programs. The, the big one is the state public school fund, and that was the one project or program we audited as major this year. And again, no findings, question costs. So the, again, on page 70, we talked about your findings from last year and how they are corrected. They were, again, related to no budget violations, the negative fund balance, which was cleared, and the prior period adjustments related to pension and fixed assets. We also had a finding related to a dental liability that was overstated. You actually utilize in your general ledger a different fund for your pass-through withholdings, mostly related to dental. There's also some other withholdings that, that flow into this other fund and then are sent to, you know, various vendors, you know, potential, whoever your withholdings are run through. And they, again, can be a vast, anybody that has a financial statement withholding would create a vendor, even if, you know, if they have their own insurance that they have withheld from their check that's sent out. So that funding, again, mostly made up of dental, was overstated last year. The reconciliation this year, you know, provided that that liability was in line, so there was no adjustment. And management is overseeing that reconciliation monthly and comparing it on a monthly basis to make sure it doesn't get out of, out of whack, basically. But the problem really wasn't that it was overstated by, from one year, it was a 20 years of profit generated by being self-insured dental that was still being shown as a liability, but really had been profits to you. And that $1 million adjustment was utilized in paying down some of that fund balance liability. So that also was cleared, yeah, that fourth finding this year. So that's, that's all I have. A vastly different report than a year ago. I appreciate Leslie's hard work. There, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of retiring finance officers out there the last two years, been the hardest two years in a lot of their memories, and a lot of people who are close to retirement are using that opportunity to step away. And so there's a somewhat changing of the guard. And so I really think you, I couldn't have imagined how you would have gotten out of where you were in just one year without having somebody new to the position and somebody who had to make it work, because she's got a long career ahead of her. So again, I, using, you know, I, again, I couldn't have imagined how it would have gone any other way. So I have enjoyed working with her. I appreciate your decision to take a chance on her, to hire her, and let her utilize all the assets she needed to get this where it needed to be. So just a much different audit this year.
Now, we just need to figure out a way to get the state's liability off our books.
Yeah. And I, that's not, yeah. And actually, there's going to be more liabilities. So the GAZB who issues these standards, they're applied to every governmental unit across the country. Whether you are the city of Chicago or Wayne County Schools, you follow the same rules. And so part of being more transparent is to throw everything that could be important into these, and it makes them very difficult to read, in my opinion. I think in the future, we're going to see added liabilities and assets for software programs that you pay for, copiers, computers, any kind of a lease. Again, just more complicated for not much benefit. It might be different if you were actually a entity that issued your own bonds. You know, if, if I was a bond investor and I wanted to see what kind of unfunded liabilities you had out there, then maybe I would need net position. But that's just not how North Carolina works, but yet you have to follow the same rules. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions about these at any time because I know they can be difficult to look at. But I really think that exhibit three, four, seven, and eight are the most important exhibits in those statements.
Well, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay. Next, we'll go into our board action section. First, I'd like to say the first item on here, item A. I might ask Ms. Strickland if she would read the resolution, but I would like to make a comment and say thank you to Representative John Bell, Senator Jim Perry, Representative Raymond Smith. Obviously, they worked very hard to get a budget passed this year, and in that budget, they included some funds that were, they come to us as a fund, state fund, but they are earmarked here locally. And the board of commissioners, chairman, myself, our superintendent, the county manager, and Representative Bell, we all met and we adopted this resolution jointly between Wayne County Board of Education and Wayne County Board of Commissioners. And this is a joint resolution, and it's agreement between the two boards that we spend a certain dollar amount specifically designated for Rosewood Middle School. And I think I will ask Ms. Strickland if she would please read it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate that. This is a joint resolution between the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education, committing $20 million in state funding for Rosewood Middle School construction. Whereas the state of North Carolina has allocated $20 million to Wayne County in its approval, approved by annual budget as a block grant. And whereas Rosewood Middle School was constructed in the 1920s and is currently in need of replacement and/or extensive renovations. And whereas several state leaders have visited Rosewood Middle School facility and acknowledged the serious need for construction funding. And whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education have identified Rosewood Middle School as a capital needs priority. Whereas the intent of the $20 million block grant from the state was to fund Rosewood Middle School renovations or to assist in funding a replacement facility. And whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education are committed to work together to ensure the entire $20 million block grant is used for Rosewood Middle School and not for other capital needs. And whereas both the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education acknowledge the leadership and tireless work of Representatives John Bell, Representative Raymond Smith, and Senator Jim Perry in obtaining funds for the Rosewood Middle School project. Now be it therefore resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education, that funding from the $20 million block grant for Wayne County will be used exclusively for renovations to Rosewood Middle School or a replacement facility, that the boards will work together on the Rosewood Middle School project to ensure efficient use of state funds, that should the project exceed the $20 million block grant, the boards will work to identify additional funding sources to complete the project, that appreciation is given to the Wayne County Legislative Delegation for obtaining funding for this much-needed project, which will benefit future generations of Wayne County children. Passed and adopted the sixth day of December 2021 by the Wayne County Board of Education. And it is to be signed by Don Christopher West, Chairman, Wayne County Board of Education, and by Dr. David Lewis, Secretary. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution between the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education.
I second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to request that the resolution be amended to include the name of Senator Don Davis, who also was a budget negotiator, negotiator, who works in this particular area, and that his name be added to this resolution.
I will ask that Dr. Lewis and, and Craig Honeycutt discuss that. I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I want to make sure, because I would have thought that we would have included any and all that should have been on here. But that's, you know, if it's, if it needs to be corrected, then...
As long as, as long as both boards pass the same resolution, that's what makes it a joint resolution. So if we add Senator Davis's name, we have to know that there are also really names to change and add Senator Davis's name.
Well, I think Don, Don Davis has been a friend of Wayne County and eastern North Carolina, but there are many other House of Representatives and senators. And where, when, where, when do you, who do you include and who do you not include? I believe that the ones that were the intent, and correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, but I believe the intent was our local representatives, the ones, the ones that actually represent Wayne County. Is that right?
Yes.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Chair, I would also like to say that Senator Davis was a member of the conference committee. So had it not gone, come through conference committee, it might not have worked. He supported it in conference.
Well, I just, I think we need to move forward with the resolution before us. If we need to amend it at some given time, we can do that with, after discussing it with the county. Is that good with you, Richard?
It's up to the board.
Okay. Is that good with the board? I think we need to move forward with the resolutions.
Mr. Schwartz, can you advise me on this? Would it be appropriate to ask that the resolution be passed as written with a request to the Board of Commissioners to potentially add a name if that's the will of this board?
Well, right now, you have a motion on the floor to approve the current resolution. You have a request by Mr. Henderson to amend it.
Okay. Well, what we need to do, if we're going to add names to, we need to make sure that any and everyone who participated in voting for, working on committees or whatever, that got this money actually in the budget for Rosewood is mentioned. And that's probably what we were trying to steer, not steer clear of, but these three are our local delegations, and those are the, that's the reason they're on this.
Mr. Chair, I would be comfortable with us just voting where we are. I think Senator Don Davis is a fine man. I think the world of him. This, I believe, was the intention for this delegation that represents Wayne County at this moment. If we do get word tomorrow that the commissioners don't mind adding names, I wouldn't mind revisiting the resolution. But at this moment, I do not want to delay this. I would like to move forward with the vote.
Yes, because it's on their agenda to vote tomorrow as well.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Schwartz, can I ask you this question? If the Board of Commissioners were to determine tomorrow that they too would like to include Mr. Davis's name, would we then treat it as a technical correction to a, to a past document?
No, it would not be a technical correction. You'd have to come back and revisit it.
Any other discussion?
I think we ought to move forward with it as is, and if at a future date more names need to be added, then we'll revisit it at that point.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Seconded by Ms. Patricia Burden. The motion was made by Ms. Strickland. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six to one, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members, Dr. Lewis, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present to you this evening the monthly COVID-19 update. As we look at the information here, the toolkit hasn't really changed, but there is one noticeable change from this past month's board report to today. There is currently an exemption that has been added to the toolkit. There's currently, prior to this exemption, there are three. So if you are named a close contact, but you're fully vaccinated, you're exempt from quarantine. If you had COVID-19 in the past 90 days, you're exempt from quarantine. And in a school setting, if you were consistently and appropriately masked, you and the person had COVID-19, the person with COVID-19 went home, but you are exempt from quarantine. This fourth exemption essentially, well, states exemption from quarantine is considered, if approved by the local health department, for persons who are not fully vaccinated and have tested antibody positive within three months before or immediately following a close contact. As we consider looking at the information, the exclusion information itself has not changed while the additional exemption has. Looking at the six reasons that we look at within this particular report for being excluded, COVID-positive, COVID-positive secondary... COVID-positive, COVID-positive secondary cases, which means that you contracted it after being named a close contact or had a reasonable connection to someone at school, or symptomatic, named as a close contact of a COVID-positive individual, named as a close contact of a COVID-positive individual while you're at school without appropriate masking or vaccination, not at school, not vaccinated, and of course, during athletics or extracurriculars. I think the most pertinent data that you're interested in seeing is the exclusion data. This past month's report, that was done in November, the universal masking was still in place. This particular report reflects nearly a full month, five weeks, while you did have the Veterans Day break and the Thanksgiving break built in. You still had four solid weeks of data of students in the classrooms and in our buildings. So as you look at our COVID-positive primary rates, there was a slight decrease from 161 cases to 131, which is a significant drop from the start of the school year. Our COVID-positive secondary rates look very much similar to the start of the non-traditional calendar in August. So we had 16 cases that were considered secondary cases compared to nine the previous month. As you look at symptomatic, we are still seeing a decline in students or staff that are developed, that have any one of those 11 symptoms that might require you to be excluded until you can get an alternative medical diagnosis. And so that was 632 cases. As you look at close contact inside of a school, this is probably where, this is where you have seen an increase. And it shouldn't be a surprise, because again, if students or staff are not consistently appropriately masked, you're going to see individuals who are excluded from school. So in this case, there was 207 cases during the November report. In the December report, we had 371 cases. As we look at close contact outside of school, we continue to see that decline. So from 249 the previous report to 169 today. And then as far as athletics, we've got, had an extracurriculars, the lowest case count to date, which was seven cases over the past month for athletics or extracurriculars. And looking at our COVID-19 dashboard, pretty consistent with what we've seen over the past four months, about, you know, a little over 70% of the total cases in our schools, 70, a little over 70% of those were in our buildings and reported on the COVID-19 dashboard. As we look at those four exemptions we mentioned, we have seen a slight uptick in individuals who are fully vaccinated that were named close contacts and exempted from having to quarantine. We had 40 individuals who had COVID-19 in the past 90 days. Looking at those individuals who are exposed but were consistently and appropriately masked, we had 119 cases, or 119 cases reported compared to 262 the month before, which does show you that even though there's not universal masking in place, there are students and staff choosing out of personal choice to wear a mask. And as a result, you have someone who has COVID-19 wearing a mask and individuals that were also wearing a mask consistently and appropriately, and those individuals got to remain in school. And then we did have one case where the health department did approve an antibody positive test result, and they were exempt from quarantine. Looking at the same type of data that we looked at the last four months, and looking at students that were consistently, and staff that were consistently and appropriately masked, since August 18th, we've had 1,253 students and seven staff members to avoid being deemed a close contact. What you're probably most interested in is this past month's data. Between November 1st and December 6th, the two board reports, 117 students and two staff members were able to avoid exclusion in accordance with current NCDHHS guidance. It's important to know that five of those students and one staff member were also vaccinated or tested positive in the past 90 days, which means they would have been exempt either way. Looking at the potential amount of instructional days saved through consistent, through consistent appropriate masking, we've calculated approximately 6,285 instructional days since August 18th. But looking over the past month, 595 instructional days, because impacted students have been appropriately and consistently masked. As we look at the DHHS guidance and their guidance towards lifting indoor mask mandates, they have had an update, but the language specific to you regarding when you should consider it has not changed. And the metrics over the past seven days that you're encouraged by the CDC and NCDHHS to look at, community transmission remains high in Wayne County. Cases are 316 over the past seven days, less than 10 deaths and four hospitalizations. The vaccination information continues to climb in Wayne County. Approximately 75% of the population 18 years of age or over at least has had one vaccine. 50, approximately 59 or 58.5% are fully vaccinated of the population 18 and over. And you can do the math to see that there are individuals between the age of 12 and 18 that are currently vaccinated at least one dose or two.
Thank you, Mr. Dursen. Any questions?
Yes. Just want to get a clarification on the, on the new exemption?
Yes.
So in other words, if, let's say, a person wasn't masked properly and was told they were going to be excluded, but got evidently an antibody test that showed that they had positive antibodies, then they would not be excluded?
Providing the health department approves that antibody test result. And then it'd be at our consideration. And of course, we already have had one situation where someone was approved by the health department that was exempt.
So where do parents take their kids to get antibody tests? Can they go to LabCorp?
They would need to go online and search for a location local.
For example, I know they could do it at Harris Teeter. Now, it costs $25 at Harris Teeter, but you know in 15 minutes. Okay, that's, that's one option. I've heard LabCorp.
They do.
They do it, and I believe that's free. So, so if they do get that, and then they present that to the health department, and the health department determines yes, then they don't have to be excluded for 10 days. They can go back to school. Is that correct?
If, if it's approved by the health department and that information is, we would receive a letter stating so, and at which point they could be considered for exemption.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make, make some clarification. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? So this time, Mr. Schwartz, is appropriate for us to, we have to...
You must vote on whether or not to change your current mask policy.
So...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we keep our current mask policy as it is.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay.
That passed 5-2.
5-2. Yes, sir. All right. Now, Dr. Otis.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Lewis, tonight I bring before you an amendment to our contract with Simplicity Counseling. We are already in a current contract where they provide mental health services to five area, five of our schools. We will be adding Wayne Middle High Academy to this list, so it will bring it to six. It has been vetted through Mr. Schwartz and is ready for your approval.
What are those schools, Dr. Otis?
They are in the southern area, Carver, Brogdon, Brogdon Middle, Carver Heights, Wayne Middle High Academy, and Grantham.
And Mount Olive Middle.
And Mount Olive Middle, yes.
We have added Grantham. Have we added Grantham?
I may have said Grantham. I meant Mount Olive Middle. Thank you. It's Mount Olive Middle. They are all in the south. They previously just did Brogdon Primary and Brogdon Middle, but we expanded this year with ESER funds. And Dr. Cox contacted us and needed some additional support. Since we were already in contract with them, we amended that contract.
The list of schools is on page two of the attached document.
And, and we can use ESER funds for this increase also?
Yes.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the addendum contract between Wayne County Public Schools and Simplicity Counseling Services.
I second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Dr. Otis, I think you have the next one as well.
The next is for Ape in a Box. We have found that that contract is below the financial threshold, but it is a contract, so we did want it to bring it to you. We have Ms. White here, if you have any questions for that, but we are ready for you to approve that if it is appropriate. I think because it's the threshold, Dr. Lewis said we did not have to.
Hang on just a second. Actually, the one that's in board docs now is for assessments for students. That's actually followed under Ms. Emerson's purview. So that, that document got switched out earlier today. The, the contract entered into under Ms. White's direction does not require board approval. That's been taken out. The contract that's in board docs right now falls under Ms. Emerson and does require board approval. So Ms. Emerson, if you would be willing to address any questions they have. No.
Focus Fitness.
Taken out.
There, there are two contracts with, with this company. One is for professional development. It does not require board approval. It's below the threshold. This one that is now in board docs is for adapted physical education assessments. And it is ready for board approval and has been legally vetted.
Yeah. And Dr. Otis, that was a change made earlier today. I informed Ms. White. I did not inform you. I'm sorry about that.
Surprise.
I think the right person is up here now, right? Okay. Good evening, everyone. What you have before you is the adaptive physical education contract between Wayne County Public Schools and adaptive PE in a box, okay? What we have has been vetted through our attorneys. And also what you have before you is the opportunity to go into contract with Dr. McPeak to conduct assessments of students who need adapted physical education evaluations to, in order to determine to add to their IEPs for goals and objectives. If you'll note on page, and the, under the Exhibit A, under Section 2A, this is being provided to us at a cost of a 50% reduction. Through this contract, Dr. McPeak will be working with one of our lead physical education teachers to train her in how to conduct these evaluations so that moving forward in the future, we will have our physical education teachers trained in how to complete those evaluations for students.
Once, once that teacher gets trained, would she be able to train others then?
That would be, that's, that's the vision, sir. That's the vision that we have in the Exceptional Children's Department, which is going to be supported by what Dr. Otis was going to present, I think, regarding the training that's going to be provided for our physical education teachers beginning in second semester under Ms. Christie White. So we are sort of hitting it from both ends. Do you have any questions?
Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Otis.
The next before you is our agreement for STEM Camp. As you may recall, we had this program last year, and it was implemented very successfully to provide enrichment for students largely from our military population, but also available to other students. Ms. White and Mr. Bass are here for any questions. The contract has been vetted through our attorneys and is much like the one we signed last year.
Are, are there any questions?
I think that during teaching and learning, there was some question about the, who was attending and the military base. You want to speak to that, Mr. Bass?
I think Ms. Bolton House is going to speak to that. And I'm sorry, Ms. Bolton House is also a point of contact and lead in this project. I'm sorry, Beverly.
We can give it to them. Your question was about the, we're, we're to service first, give the opportunity for the military child, and we have to have the same percentage of children attending that our district has. And we, you know, far exceeded that last year. And so...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, that's what we're, the goal is.
Okay. And I think also, there were some questions raised about transportation for this program.
Right. But we, you know, per the committee's decision, we will, you know, again...
The board don't know what the committee said.
Well, so it's going to be offered to everybody the same as last year. And if that, and we will come back to you after we send out the invitations. And if, if a large number, like last year, were these outlying students, and the expense for the transportation was greater than what was provided to us, then we will come to the board and let you know, because we'll know that by, you know, April, May at the latest, and say, you know, could you provide funding for those students? Because that's what happened last time. We had, you know, two students far, I mean, these towns, they were laughing at me, towns that I didn't even know were in Wayne County. And we'd have two students that was tops northwest, and then two students at the bottom southeast. And so it was one bus that had to, you know, to go this way, and then a separate bus that way. And that made our expenses go higher. But they give us a certain, allocate $10,000 for miscellaneous expenses and for the, where we actually have it. But we don't have to rent that location because it's Meadow Lane Elementary. And so we did not experience a total loss. You know, we have like a couple of thousand dollars left over. So we, you know, we should be good.
Just, just to provide a little clarity for those who aren't on the Teaching and Learning Committee, when Ms. Bolton House and Ms. White and Mr. Bass made their presentation, they had proposed to eliminate transportation for the students in this year's camp. The Teaching and Learning Committee did not agree with that and opted that the proposal be sent to the lawyer and to the vendor, as it was last year, with transportation included. So that's why there was no recommendation coming from Teaching and Learning, because there was no change in the contract.
Yeah, because we were talking about just doing those on the base. And so we will offer it to all the students. And the same $40 fee, and the students who attend all five days, they got a refund, and they'll get a refund. And the contract was vetted, because the date, there were minor changes with the dates, because it's a different year. But it's been vetted, and that's what's in there in board docs for your review.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, the motion should be to approve the contract with Goschen Education Consulting Incorporated along with the addendum as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Seconded.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you, Ms. Bolton House. I didn't see you sitting back there in the back. I'm sorry. Okay, Dr. Mason.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Board. The committee has reviewed the following policies that are before you this evening. We have a few that we are asking for action on first read, immediate action on tonight for implementation. They are listed there before you. Policy 5022, letter F through letter J. Policy 5022, registered sex offenders, first read. Policy 7100, recruitment and selection of personnel, action on, immediate action on first read. Policy 7340, employee dress and appearance, action on first read. Policy 3470, alternative learning programs for school and schools, second reading approval tonight. And J, policy 7720, employee political activities, second reading action tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz, since we're, she's requesting immediate action on the first three, even though they're first readings, can we treat all five the same and vote on all five?
No, you need to suspend the policy requiring two readings for items, agenda items, four, F, G, and H. Four, F, G, and H.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the policy as it relates to first reading on policies F, G, and H of four.[1750.12]
Have a motion to suspend on first reading for the first three. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Now we need a motion to approve F, G, and H.
You can have a motion to approve.
We can use it, okay.
Mr. Chair, I would prefer that we go through them one at the time, or at least pull 7340 for separate vote. Whichever is.
7340. Do you want to just discuss whatever issues you have, questions, your concerns?
My concern is, I actually don't know, I don't know how many people, let me back up. This is a little bit longer than what it probably should be. Policy is something that I have a passion for. I'm not on the policy committee this year, but my master's degree is in public administration. It gets into policy. Everything that comes through policy has got to be, first, that law that comes in, and then it comes through our state board and how they interpret the new law that comes forward. And then we, as a board, will get that in our hands. Over the last seven years, we have seen that there's been a lot of things that have come in front of us as a board that may have been recommended by the state board of education, but not required by the state board of education. In these situations, I don't have that in front of me. But one of my concerns I actually have is it looks like every one of these, we've gone away from where we, as a board, had vetted it back in 2017 and gone through them, because that's when most of these were changed, whether there were recommendations or requirements. And we're just going straight with the state board policies, is what it looks like. Now, I was not in the policy committee meeting, but I am. My other piece that I, I know when Ms. Burton, myself, and Dr. Mason worked on staff dress code and student dress code years ago. One of the things that I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't want to misspeak. We wanted to put more autonomy to the superintendent in some of these decisions. That's why our policy was truncated. That's why it was shrunk down a little bit with the very specific outlines. And so we took the policy and made it concise, gave the superintendent some flexibility, but then put the guidelines in place. I like that. But I would also like to see us, as a board, review some of those guidelines instead of changing the policy. So my question comes in, and the reason I wanted to discuss it is, why are we changing the dress, dress code appearance? Was what we had, or for the teachers, was what we had not in state law compliance? That's my first question. Were we in compliance?
We had been in compliance, but there has been some new litigation that has occurred that has required us to re, to look at this policy again. And I'll let Mr. Schwartz speak to that issue.
Okay, speaking directly to policy 7100?
7340.
7340.
7340.
Yes, sir.
That was Bass versus Clay County.
Right, yeah, yeah, so. The, the guidelines here are that the, do you have a specific question about this, or?
I don't want to pass the new one at all. Tell me why I need to.
Is it required?
That's what I want. I want you to tell me why I have to.
All right. So some of these changes are just minor changes. But the, the major change is that the guidelines be gender neutral for attire, and that the guidelines may authorize exemptions from the guidelines for employees performing specific duties, such as if they're doing PE or, or, or there's a special day going on.
And our current dress code, I feel, has that. We don't need to make a change there, okay?
And the the other changes that are in here are primarily the, the gender neutrality. And that's to comply with the recent court cases.
But it's gone from, it's gone down. I don't remember the number of pages, but it was more than two.
It, it was.
It really has, it really has.
It, it's gone down, and it sounds like we're still in compliance with what we have because there's nothing within our policy that specifically says a woman must wear a dress or a man must wear a suit. There's nothing that is gender-specific in our current policy. And I would say, taking it to that next step, I would like, maybe at the next meeting for the board, to consider allowing staff to wear blue jeans a little more often than we do. I know we do on, you know, field days, or maybe sometimes dressed down Fridays. But putting within, like, you can't have holes in your clothes. Our staff is working so hard. They are no longer standing at a board with a piece of chalk, talking at 30 people. They're immersed in their students. They're moving, I mean. Anyway, I'd like to see us work more with our teachers in this situation, but I don't think this policy change is necessary.
Do you want to table this until he can tell us whether it's required or not? Is it required? Can we change?
It, it's not required. What is recommended here is that the guidelines, these guidelines get more specific than our guidelines do. Our guidelines say things like, teachers will serve as role models and dress in a manner and have an appearance that is appropriate and professional in light of the environment. This says some of that same, the, the new version says some of that same stuff. But it also includes that attire must not disrupt or distract from the educational process, must be in accordance with health and safety standards, and that the superintendent will develop and communicate guidelines for appropriate dress, attire and appearance, which is also included in our current policy. What's added is specifically that the guidelines must be gen, whatever the guidelines are, this provides some guardrails for those guidelines. That is, that they must be gender-neutral, and that they may allow for specific attire or appearance requirements for each school or department, and allow for specialized exemptions.
Mr. Chair, I would be comfortable if we, you know, block voted for the others for the first read approval and vote for this one separately. But this is one that I would just like to have the opportunity to vote separately on. And then everybody just has to make their individual decision if they think adding the verbiage is necessary or not.
Well, she's asking that we do immediate first read approval for this one.
Correct.
But if it's not required, then we do it?
I, I don't say that we have to. We can vote it down.
It's not required that we do it?
We, we were bringing these to you tonight because we know that school is in session, and we wanted to move forward with the dress code. It is a recommendation from the committee.
I think, I think that, two things, I, I think Mr. Schwartz can correct me here. I think the sense of urgency is over the court ruling that specifies that our dress code for teachers should be gender-neutral, should not put any restrictions on anybody based on that. And so this is our way of saying out loud, we're in compliance with that. I think it's also worth pointing out that our current administrative regs regarding this won't have to change one way or the other over which version of the policy you choose to adopt, keep, throw away, whatever. The AR that spells out what staff can and cannot, should and should not, there's no change. So from a practical day-to-day standpoint, you're not making any change because the AR drives what the compliant, what staff members have to comply with, what they can and cannot wear. So there's, from a day-to-day standpoint, you're really not making a change. It's a question of whether or not you want to vote on a policy that says out loud the things that the, the state board, the, I'm sorry, the School Boards Association version says out loud that we don't currently say.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak to this as well. If you will look at the, the policies, we have included both policies for, both policies for you. There's a 7340, that is the state board's policy. And then there's a 7340, which was our policy. When the committee looked at this, the committee felt like the, the one that was presented by the state board was a much better policy than the policy that we currently have in our possession.
School Board Association.
The School Boards Association.
I would also mention that when you look at the, the version that was adapted from the School Boards Association, at the bottom of page one, the statement that says supervisors and principals making school-level interpretations may allow exceptions for particular events, e.g., teacher workday, spirit days, homecoming week, field trips. That was pulled directly from our existing policy because the committee felt that that had been important in the past to give principals and supervisors discretion, and we didn't want to lose that.
This might be very minor, but everywhere inside here, we've struck dress and put attire, except for in the title. The title says employed dress. Do we need to strike dress and put attire?
We did, we discussed that. We chose, the, the committee chose to leave the title alone because future recommendations around this will continue to use that title from the School Boards Association. They're not changing theirs. What we've chosen under certain circumstances is to, is to change it within the policy. So it was, that was discussed.
If you're going for a gender issue, dress would meet that requirement. There's attire.
But you get dressed every morning, though. You don't get attired every morning.
Well, that's at your house.
But I guess the overall point is, and I'm not trying to belabor something, that to some is simple, that this is just a dress code. It's not that simple. The last dress code we had that was over two and a half, three pages long, was very lengthy, very wordy, very hard for people to get through. We intentionally put together the smaller concise policy to meet the standards and to make it very easy to understand. I, I don't, now I'll start with that one.
Do you wish to take this one and remove it?
Just to vote on it separately, yes, sir. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, you currently don't, you currently don't have a motion on the floor. So you could take these individually and go through them and probably knock them out a lot more quickly than debating whether to.
Well, we could go G, H, J, and K. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. I need to get them all.
Yeah.
Yeah, you start with F.
F, G, I, and J.
F, G, I, and J.
Yes.
So, can I get a motion to approve F, G, I, and J?
I guess the question, though, is actually, are we approving the recommended or the existing as we go? So whoever makes the motion, because it does have both policies listed for us, so make sure there's no confusion.
I'll go on two of them.
Two, two, two of them are, two of, two of them, the committee is recommending replacing our existing with the School Boards Association version as listed. One of those is employee dress and appearance, which we're pulling for a separate vote. The other one is registered sex offenders. The recommendation is to replace existing WCPS policy with the version provided by the School Boards Association.
I guess I'd have the same question. What's the reasoning for that, Mr. Schwartz?
There were a number of court cases that changed some of this stuff, and there were some changes in the statutes as well.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Okay, so do you need a motion to, to approve by number? Or just approve pol, the F, G, I, and J?
Which is what I asked.
You can have that if you want.
Okay.
Okay.
So do we have that motion?
I move that.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz.
Now.
Mr. Chair.
Who, who was the second on that? I'm sorry.
Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you.
Now we will vote separately on H.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we keep our current policy 7340 in place.
Second.
Have a second.
And not use this one?
Not use the new one, I mean.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve policy, item H, with the School Board Association's verbiage as listed.
Item what?
H, isn't it H?
H.
H.
H. Okay. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? I have two, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mason.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Harold.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Dr. Lewis, and members of the board. May I first say, since this is the last official meeting before Christmas, Merry Christmas. And Happy New Year, since the next official board meeting is not technically until January. So, so greetings to you. The two items that you have next, item K and L, those two separate items come to you from the facilities committee. As the last couple of board meetings, as we have been here, we have maintenance and facilities has recommended some purchase orders to you out of ESTER funds to be approved at your request, or your approval, excuse me. The two you have, or the ones you have today, are for the walls being replaced in our cafeterias at four of our schools. As you know, we, we have had this opportunity to replace these now for a couple of years, and our funding has not allowed us, but the ESTER funds has allowed us to be able to do this. This is a sole, single-source item, which is why you see these being approved to the one company out of Kentstown, North Carolina, Proven Products. There's also one you may have asked that's a little higher than the others when you look at the dimension of the walls, and that would be Northwest, or it could be a little less. Northwest, I believe, the tracking does not have to be replaced where the other schools that are a similar design. The tracking has to also be replaced as well. So this is coming to you as asking for a motion for approval of these POs from the facilities committee, please.
I have a motion to approve item K.
So moved. Second.
I've got a question. With item number four for Eastern Wayne, this is Eastern Wayne Elementary?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So it'll be Eastern Wayne Elementary, Northwest, Northeast, and North Drive, Mr. Anderson. Yes, sir.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, board members.
Dr. Harold, item L.
Next item, item L, is coming, again, from facilities committee on behalf of child nutrition. So child nutrition, you may not be aware, they have used what's called a MealsPlus accounting in school nutrition software for several years now. They were notified that that software platform is beginning to be phased out and will no longer be supported. And in actuality, it is transitioning over to the Titan software with part of the LINK software package that we are already utilizing in our district. So this is coming to you asking for approval on behalf of child nutrition. You have two items in your queue. You have, of course, the contract proposal and the price proposal. It's broken out, or up over five years with the first year having some initialization costs as it gets utilized. And of course, this will be paid for out of child nutrition funds as they generate revenue for the district. It has been submitted to Mr. Schwartz's office for legal review at this time.
And it's been approved.
Thank you.
I guess based on the fact that there's a $17,000 increase, and we got that through, what, five years?
Yes, sir.
So that looks like that may be a deal. We need to jump on it before it goes up 17,000, I guess.
Right, and, and we have, the, the Titan software system has given us a discount waiting for approval from the board. So they've held the price for Miss Face and Child Nutrition pending your approval tonight.
And this is, if I remember right, this is in line with the costs that we were accruing?
Yes, sir. And we've had the MealsPlus, yes, sir. MealsPlus software has been around for years, and it's, like most software programs, it's phasing out and no longer being supportive. It is in line, yes, sir.
We have a motion to approve item L.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Do you have a question?
The only question I had, I noticed on your, your big quote, that it said that it expired on June 15, 2021. Have we gotten permission from them to, that they will hold proof to this?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. We contacted them personally when they gave us the quote and informed them that it would need board approval. And our next board meeting, at the time we were discussing it, was going to be this December meeting, and they notified us they would hold the price for us pending our board approval. Yes, sir.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Harold.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Ralph?
Same to you.
Good evening again. Tonight, I bring for the board purchase orders and contracts that require board approval. First up, we have White International's Truck and Tractor. This is for a bus engine, being funded through state transportation PRC 56 funds. And the amount of this is for $25,806.01. Next up, we have Teacher Creative Materials. This is for science bundles for grades six through eight. This is being funded with ESER II PRC 171 funds in the amount of $95,475.59. Our third item is GaggleNet. This is safety management software. This is being funded through ESER, federal PRC 171. We did receive guidance from the state that the state will provide funding for this, but due to the times, we're purchasing it with ESTER funds, and then we'll reimburse when state funds are received. And the amount of this contract is for $125,496. And it has been reviewed and approved by legal. Next, we have Power School Group. This is for student enrollment services. This is being funded with ESTER II funds. The amount of this is for $40,475, and it is pending legal review. Our fifth item is for Synergistic. This is the renewal of a contract of services for the energy savings management. This is being funded through Capital Outlay, PRC 77 funds. This is a projected amount of $600,000 for the year. This is an open requisition for Synergistic. Next, we have Lenovo for teacher laptops for Eastern Wayne Elementary School, being funded through their Title I funds in the amount of $48,543.50. And then lastly, we have Learning.com, which for, it was just for K through eight digital learning, fifth through eighth grade student bundles. This is a license being paid from state PRC 78 funds in the amount of $88,608. This is a license being paid from state PRC seventy-eight funds, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and eight dollars, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Um, this particular funding source is very specific for this product, um, the state has informed us it can only be used, um, for this software with Learning dot com. Any questions?
So we need a motion to approve item one, two, three, five, six, seven, and item four pending legal review.
Yes, sir.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I do have one question, but it's not going to be about whether or not it passes, it's a general question about the curriculum being ordered. Why are we only buying science bundles for three schools? Is that the only principals that requested that program?
No, Ms. Strickland, when we did the prior order, we did a five through eight bundle, and the schools that are six through eight were erroneously left off.
Gotcha.
So we went back and got the six, seventh, and eighth schools, and doing a five through eight, they just weren't up there, and, um, I noticed it and went back and got those schools.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
I got a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question first, on synergistics with energy savings management, how do we know that we are saving the energy? That's six hundred thousand dollars, and are we going on their word that we're saving this energy?
Dr. Harold can address that for you.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Happy New Year.
Okay.
Part of the six hundred thousand will cover the contractual obligation that we have to spend this fiscal year. Synergistic bills us home, um, cost improvements based on a baseline year that was established when they first came into the nation. They compare the baseline, uh, utilities, electrical, gas, oil, and then based on that, how compared to, how, how they do it.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralph.
Thank you.
Nope, she's got one more.
This is a big one.
The most important one.
Yes.
Budget resolution.
Yes, I'll wait for Mr. Dirksen to provide the slideshow for the budget resolution. So give, give you a little, um, heads up, remember back in June, you adopted the interim budget for Wayne County Public Schools? Um, that interim budget carried us through December. Now, as we were waiting and waiting for the state budget to be approved, um, we could not wait any longer. So in November, we presented the budget le, resolution to the Finance Committee. The next day, Governor Cooper approved the state budget. So right now, this budget resolution is presented on data and, um, funding that we have received as of November fifth, twenty twenty-one. Just know more budget amendments will be forthcoming as funds are received through the state, um, so this will not be the end of our current budget for Wayne County Public Schools, okay? So first up, for the state budget, we know that Governor Cooper signed the budget into law on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Currently, all LEAs are still receiving guidance on the budget from DPI. What we do know is that we are, the ADM is held harmless for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which is great. That was one thing, um, that we were worried. Um, next up, we do know that fixed costs have increased. Um, currently, we know that there will be salary increases forthcoming, the retirement rate has increased to twenty-two point eighty-nine percent, and the hospitalization rate, um, has increased to seven thousand, nineteen dollars, um, per person. Um, we do know as far as low wealth funds, um, our current planning allotment is still at a decrease, um, to what we believe will be the initial allotment. So again, that's pending further guidance from DPI. Um, we do know in the state budget, it stated that the state will provide a new allotment of low wealth to increase salary supplements for teachers and instruct, instructional support based on low-wealth counties. Again, we're, um, waiting on more guidance with that. Um, we do know as far as exceptional children, the cap has increased from twelve and a half percent to thirteen percent for the twenty-twenty-one year. Um, do know that our current funding level for this year is based off the headcount from December first, twenty twenty-year, which is at twelve percent of the ADM. So we, we did lose some funding there, but, um, you have approved psychology contracts, um, that continue through December to help identify and complete year-round evaluations to make sure that we have an accurate representation of students with exce, with exceptionalities for this past December first headcount. So this December first headcount that just happened will drive the funding for next school year, okay? So we do appreciate your support in allowing, um, those contracted services for staff.
Uh, Ms. Ralph, may I ask you this?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, when we leave for the winter break, will all of the students that we were behind with during the summer be completed?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Emerson.
Ms. Emerson said it again.
Okay, all of the students that we hired additional psychologists to work during the summer and since school has started, will they be completed? When we go home, by the time we go home for winter break?
The ones that were behind when we first began the contract, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, we are continuing as, you know.
So now we're dealing with students that are coming on board since we've been back in school?
As, as they say, the deed goes on, we continue to get referrals every day, and students who come up, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
Do we have a percentage, an actual percentage of Wayne County students?
As far as you're talking about, this December first headcount has not been established yet for what just happened this past year.
I know, because we got the increase in funding, but it's still, is probably going to be below what our actual percentage of EC students is.
I can speak to that, okay? For I, our December one headcount that just happened last week that you're asking about, I have until December the twentieth to certify that count. We are in the process of cleaning up any parts of it, uh, by midnight, November thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Every student that we are serving, we're working, coming through the night to make sure that IP was active and current. And so then I have until December the twentieth to certify that headcount, and we're in the process of making sure that no other districts are trying to claim students that we have as our students move between districts. That's where we're going, I'll be able to provide, hopefully by the principals' meeting on Wednesday, that number that we're looking at, so. I'm not sure what percentage that will be at that point, but it tells me it's going to be hiring twelve, ten students.
It, it historically has been, right, yes.
At one point, so our Wayne Public Schools is almost, yeah, almost fourteen percent of student population.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so as far as the budget resolution, um, the state public school funds identified in the budget resolution are based off the NCDPI allotment, allotment revision number seventeen, which, um, was dropped on November fifth, twenty twenty-one. Um, currently, any new funds from the state budget have not been allotted at this time, so we're still waiting on those. Um, as far as the federal grant funds, um, they're based off the federal grants that we have received as of November fifth, twenty twenty-one. Um, additional federal funds are to be allotted soon, we're still remain, we are still waiting on the remaining balance of ESER three funds, as well as federal EC funds to drop. As far as school food service funds, um, this is just a projection of revenues and expenditures for that source. Um, these revenues are driven by the USDA claim reimbursements and local supplemental sales for school food service. Next, we have Capital Outlay, um, this appropriation is based on the technology appropriation, um, provided by the county, as well as a small project appropriation. And then we have a, um, small fund balance appropriation that auditor had stated earlier. And then we have local revenue, which is based off facility rental, which just, which is just a projection for this year. Um, and then lastly, we have the state LEA finance purchases of school buses, which is just pass-through funds. Um, then we have other local current expense funds, um, we do receive, um, county appropriation for restricted funds. We receive state funds for pre-K and ROTC, as well as federal funds for Impact Aid and Medicaid. And then lastly, local unrestricted funds in regards to indirect costs, um, a small portion from the city of Goldsboro, and then any type of miscellaneous revenue that we receive throughout the year. And then lastly, for the local current expense funds, this is driven off the county appropriation that we have received this year, as well as the county appropriation for supplement, which is restrictive funds. In previous year, the county appropriation for the supplement for restrictive funds in the amount of eight hundred thousand, two hundred dollars, has been, um, budgeted in Fund Eight. After speaking with our auditors, this actually has to be budgeted in Fund Two, which is our local appropriation, which means that now charter schools will receive a percentage, um, of that funding source. So I wanted to let you know that is something new this year for Fund Two. And then we have fines and forfeitures, which is just a projection for this year that we, um, believe that we'll receive. And then lastly, charter schools, this year for charter schools, we budgeted about one point four million that will, um, we feel that will be, um, distributed to them for this fiscal school year. Um, now, we, just to let you know, we greatly, we do greatly appreciate the funds given to us by the county, um, we, we truly do. But with the fixed cost increases, as well as realizing that when your salary increases, so does your supplements, your supplements are percentage-based, so just be, um, familiar with that. Um, last year alone in supplements, including the benefits, we spent seven point three million dollars. So the county restricted funds that we received for supplements was about eleven percent of that. So, um, so anyways, we'll get to the budget resolution now that I need requesting for you to adopt. Um, as far as the state public school funds for the budget resolution, we're appropriating a hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-six, excuse me, a hundred and twenty-six million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. For local current expense, we've got twenty-one million, eighteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Federal grants, we have seventy-four million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-seven cent. For local capital outlay, we have three million, one hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. School food service, we have ten million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then for other local current expense funds, we have three point seven million, ten, three million, seven hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, for a grand total of two hundred and thirty-nine million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seventy-five dollars and sixty cent. In section two, it breaks down the revenues for these appropriate sources. So for state public school funds, it's in all, because with our budget resolution, we adopt at the fund level. So again, it matches, um, the funds appropriated up top of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, a hundred and twenty-six million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. For local current expense, we have the county appropriation of nineteen million, six hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. We have the local revenue unrestricted for the supplements of, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, local revenue unrestricted, which is the fines and forfeitures, of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And then the county appropriation for the supplement, which is restricted in the amount of eight hundred thousand, two hundred dollars. Your federal grant funds, um, match your appropriated at the top, which is seventy-four million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-seven cent. And then as far as local capital outlay, you see the state public school buses, in the amount of three hundred thousand. The county appropriation for technology of six hundred thousand, your county appropriation of small project of two million, your fund balance appropriation of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars, and the projected revenue of facility rental in the amount of fifteen thousand. And then as far as the school food service fund, your federal funds, which is your USDA claim reimbursements, in the amount of ten million, four hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then your local funds, which is your supplemental sales, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand. Lastly, we have local, other local current expense funds, the county appropriation for Wish, which is restrictive funds in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Your county appropriation of Creative Cubs, which is restrictive funds in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand. Then the state funds, um, which are from, excuse me, um, your pre-K and ROTC, in the amount of one point two million. Then your federal funds, which include Impact Aid and Medicaid, in the amount of one million, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And then your local unrestricted, which is your indirect, indirect cost, um, that we charge federal programs, your, um, city of Goldsboro, any of the miscellaneous ra, revenue that we receive throughout the year, in the amount of one point two million. Any questions?
You say that fast.
I worked on for a long time.
Any questions for Ms. Ralph? Okay, we need a motion to approve the budget resolution.
So moved.
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a second, wait a second. I just want to say, and I'm gonna maybe overstep my bounds a little bit here, but on behalf of us, after getting that audit, I'd like to, uh, say thank you for all your hard work. I think you deserve a round of applause.
Thank you, but it was definitely a team effort, as Dr. Lewis.
You and your team, that's correct.
It was definitely a team, all the way from the school level to leadership to, um, each of you. Um, definitely could not have done it without your support, and I appreciate everything, thank you.
Okay, it's time for our consent agenda. Ms. Morden.
A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and/or items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings, open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, the closed session minutes for November one and November five, twenty twenty-one, those are agenda items five C and five E respectively, need to remain closed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda with items five C and five E, the minutes of the closed sections remaining confidential.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second by Mr. Sanders, motion by Mr. Latham. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's, uh, I think we've reached our board comment. Mr. Henderson.
Yes, um, first of all, I would like to again say thanks to the General Assembly and our local delegation, Senator Perry, Senator, I meant Representative Bell and Representative Raymond Smith. But along with that, I would like to recognize, uh, Senator Don Davis for, uh, his efforts to make sure that we got this Rosewood Middle School. Uh, I'm also moved by the fact that if I'm not wrong, and I guess Mr. Schwartz can tell me this, but they have removed the statutes that deal with the innovative school district. Is that, ain't that correct?
That's coming out, yep.
So, thank God for that, we don't have to go through another Carver Height situation. Even though there has been much benefit to that, especially with the community involvement and community engagement, I think that, that was very, very critical. Um, I want to congra, congratulate Mr. Alondo Mitchell and the Goldsboro community, uh, for the work that they're doing together to get the new, uh, the new equip, band equipment. If you noticed on our donations list, there was a lot of, uh, donations that were given to Goldsboro High School for the, our music program, and I want to applaud all of them for that as well. I do have some, uh, some real concerns, and I think the, the young lady expressed them well today as far as what's going on with our bus drivers. I think that, uh, it's time that we had some real sit-down, serious talks with the bus drivers, because a lot of things are happening, and we're not really hearing from them. And I know that, uh, Dr. Harold has planned for a meeting sometime soon to sit down and address these particular issues with the, with the, uh, with the bus drivers. I would like to be a part of that meeting to hear exactly what these bus drivers are having to say, uh, because there are a lot of issues out there for them, safety issues, as well as pay issues, as well as all sorts of other kind of issues. And I think if, if we come together and sit down and talk, maybe we can relieve some of the frustration that's held by some of our bus drivers. So I want us to come together and try to work on that as well. I, I was reminded by Dr. Demisha Smith before she left, uh, our ranks as a Wayne County Public School employee, she was the principal at Brogdon Middle School. And her last request to me was, as, as, uh, as principal, was to ensure that the sign that they had purchased for that school would eventually be lit up and be working. And, uh, Dr. Harold, I'm hoping that at least during the Christmas holidays, maybe we can get something done on that particular end. Uh, to, uh, Dr. Artis and to Ms. Krista White, I want to give a outstanding shout-out for the core presentations that were done last week. I attended two days of those core presentations, and it was excellent. One of the things that I heard most frequently was, well, where are the board members? Our staff are beginning to feel as though the board does not care about them. And that's something, Mr. Chairman, that I hope that we will put on the forefront this year, is looking at what are some ways that we can get with these? year, is looking at what are some ways that we can get with these employees to kind of let them know that we are with them and that we're standing behind them. I also had some discussions with some staff members, and they said to me, I asked them, why don't y'all invite board members to stuff? You know what their response to me was? Because the board members won't come. That's a sad state of affairs for us as a board. When the community is saying, we won't even reach out to them. So again, that's something that we need to work on. Lastly, I had some concerns raised about the bleachers over at Mount Olive Middle School. And I did happen to go to Mount Olive Middle School's first game, which was last Thursday, and I, I know what they're talking about, because I, I almost failed and started a lawsuit against the Wayne County Board of Education. So I want you to know that we're looking out and we want something to be done about the bleachers at Mount Olive Middle School. Dr. Harold, you got me? As well as wash and dry. So I'm putting this on my Christmas wish list for Mount Olive Middle School. But with that said, I would just like to say to each and every one listening and those present here today, have a blessed Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
First of all, congratulations, Ms. Burden, Mr. West, who are gonna be leading the board next year, looking forward to get a lot of things done. And Merry Christmas.
Mr. Latham?
I'm gonna piggyback on you and say congratulations to Ms. Burden and Mr. West for the continued leadership of the board and the renewed leadership of the board. Thank you. Again, so much work was done. You know, you look at that, one of those last pages on that budget or the audit, and it says corrected, 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 corrected. And I circled it and wrote Bravo next to it. And that's the way, that's just, you know, it's a good feeling to know that, you know, we spent the better part of a year dealing with that issue and that we've got it straightened it out. And I think a big part of that is because we got lucky when we hired Leslie Ross. So, thank you again. You and your staff have done monumental work, and you should be thanked. I'm pretty sure we all appreciate it immensely. So, again, Ken, thanks for all the updates on the COVID, and we appreciate you keeping us informed of that. So I think it's important, and I think we can all see that, you know, things are moving in the right direction, like I said earlier. I think we're starting to see a little bit of COVID in our rearview mirrors. Okay, we weren't bottlenecked with it, and everything's starting to move. So hopefully, this, this stuff is eventually gonna get behind us and we can get back to quote-unquote "normal" here in schools. So, thanks to everybody for all your hard work. We do appreciate it. And Merry Christmas.
Mr. Fox?
First, parents, if you don't know what a fast form is, please show up tomorrow at Wayne Community College in the Moffett Auditorium. Wayne County Public Schools has got CFNC coming to help you out. I can tell you, working at the college, that there are typically, at the beginning of the semester, a lot of students waiting a very long time because they don't have their financial aid figured out. There's a lot of funding out there. There's, I'm not gonna say there's no opportunity to where you couldn't get funding, but it seems like there's just so many opportunities to continue your education out there. So please, if you've never heard of this, you want to know what to do, please show up there tomorrow and get that done. Another thing, I had the pleasure this morning of going over to East Wayne High School and judging some decorated doors. Ms. Artis, I heard that you missed out on that, that you like to go to that event, and some ugly sweaters. So it was a good festive activity there. I enjoyed that. That was where I graduated high school at. Mr. Dirksen, I want to also thank you so much for the pictures. I was unable to attend the choral showcase because of some other scheduled stuff before I got on the board, but the social media posts and pictures were awesome. And lastly, I just wanted to say about some other community events, community involvement. I got to attend the Partnership for Children. They reached out to me as a board member and asked me if I'd like to come to their annual meeting. And I'm very thankful in some of the stuff, the connections that they kind of tried to, tried to bring into workforce development. And it's something that in the public schools, I'm sure the teachers understand, but unmet social and emotional needs of our children at a young age, employers, that comes out as soft skills. When you're telling us that we need to train on soft skills in high school or train in soft skills in college, those are typically things that are, we're dealing with from a very young age. And so I really enjoyed them inviting me out there, and I look forward to also going to the Partnership, or Partnership for Children, the community supporting schools, which is later on this week.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I would like to say thank you to Representatives Bell and Smith and Senator Perry for the block funding for Rosewood Middle School. It is long overdue. I know the community is both excited and a little bit nervous because we don't want to lose that community school. And I don't think anyone in any of the delegations is looking to remove Rosewood Middle. Let's start with there. But I can say that my father not only graduated from that school, but myself and all of my siblings graduated from Rosewood, that middle school building, except for me. I think I was the first one, no, correction, Terry was in that first group that graduated with me. My sister, Terry, and myself actually went there. It was like a Rosewood Middle School, and then went into the high school. Well, there was that transition from where it was the high school building to the middle school building, actually elementary for a period of time. I attended there as an elementary student. And then my three boys went there as middle school students. The school has a wonderful history. There's wonderful memories there. I know it's been all over, you know, the internet. Folks in the community want to make sure that we preserve pieces of Rosewood Middle School as we make this transition. No official decisions have been made. There's nothing that I can announce. I will just say that I'm gonna do my best to make sure that there's still a piece of the old middle school within that new building, whether it is a renovation or a replacement. It's gonna be a great thing for the community, and so thank you to everyone that worked on that project. Secondly, I was not gonna, I'm not bringing this up because of Mr. Henderson's comments. It's actually on my notes here. I did want to say that I apologize for not attending any of the choral presentations. I have been suffering from vertigo for almost four weeks now. So two days from now will be four full weeks. First 10 days, I didn't even drive. Now I don't like driving at night, so I'll take prayers, 'cause I'm absolutely getting miserable. The later the day goes, the more cloudy my head gets. So I do apologize to everyone for not attending the choral presentations. Those in my district, though, do hear from me. I contact my schools. I send them gift cards. I ask them to tell me what's going on so I can attend when I am physically capable. And I am gonna make the announcement official that I will not be filing for reelection. I want to thank Grantham and Rosewood community, though, for their immense support over the last seven years. It has been an amazing honor to work with the people in those communities and to serve them, and I look forward to doing it with just as much vigor the next 11 months as I have the past seven years. But I will continue to serve you in other capacities after the time on the board has expired. So, thank you all.
Thank you, for sure. Ms. Burden?
I'd like to begin by saying congratulations to Dr. Lewis, Mrs. Rouse, members of the leadership team, and Mrs. Rouse had also included the school site, staff, and employees for the outstanding job that you have done that allowed us to receive such an outstanding review of our financial standing. It was a hard year, but we had some good things that worked in our favor. As you understood, the gentleman said that it was amazing that we were able to come out of that as well as we did in one year's time. And so all we have to do now is just build up that fund balance and stay focused and make sure we don't get out of line. I also would like, and I'm sorry that she left, but I would really like to thank Mrs. Kristy White and recognize Dr. Artis for the teaching and learning department of our district for the outstanding job that was done the last three, well, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of last week. I think the students and the choral teachers showed us that they are working to protect our kids and keep them safe, but they were very happy to be able to perform face-to-face. And I think we saw that with the number of people in attendance each night. It was a good night. Each night was a good night in terms of attendance and the performances of the students. And I really salute the music teachers from all of the schools that participated for the work that they did, not only on the night of their performances, but to see that everything went well on the additional nights when their school site or students might not have been performing. Thank you to those of the leadership team, 'cause I know several people were out of town at different times for conferences or staff development, but I, we really did appreciate you all showing up on the nights that you could to be there to support the students. The music teachers said to us, Mr. West and I, each night, and I'm sure that they included other board members that were, that were in attendance, but they were really happy when they could see board members come in and be seated on a partial front row this time. And those that did not have long legs sat on the second row. But they, what it meant to them for us to be there. So taking into consideration what Mr. Henderson said, it is true that we have got to be out there and we've got to support. Now, Mr. Henderson, I'm gonna go one step further. If you want me there, you have to let me know that you want me there. And therefore, you cannot deny me because somebody else did not attend. So principals have to let us know the dates of their programs, and then we make a decision, 'cause I know that probably no one can attend everything all the time, but we can't attend something that we don't know is happening. And so, and it is not so much in your district assignment, it is across the board for all of our 32 schools. And then I would just add on a thank you for the $20 million that was presented to our county and designated for Rosewood Middle School. And hopefully, they can come through with some more money from some of our other schools that've come after Rosewood in terms of the number of years and the situation that it is in. Yeah. So, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Burden. I guess the first thing I'll say is, obviously, it's very important that the money we just got allocated from the state for our Rosewood Middle School project, I think everybody spoke about it. Thank you, John Bell, Representative Bell, Representative Smith, Senator Perry, and anybody else who had a vote on a committee or worked to get that money to Wayne County Public School, to Wayne County so that we can refurbish hopefully and improve Rosewood Middle School as we did Eastern Wayne and Norway some seven or eight years ago. Great job. It's great they passed the budget this year. They worked really hard to do all of that, and I thank them for it. Second thing, thank you, Mr. Rouse. You're probably tired of hearing it, but you did do a good job. Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Thank you, leadership team. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Dr. Jim Merrill, who, who charted the course for us. He was very, very instrumental in getting us where we're at today. And he's sailed off into the sunset and enjoying retirement, but he was phenomenal when he was here. He was, he's really a smart educator. So, thank you, Dr. Merrill. Thank you, everyone who worked so hard to get us where we're at. The choral ensemble, I enjoy it every year. This is my 11th year, and I've sat through all three nights of it for 11 years. So, you know, they appreciate us being there. Some of them are so, those young kids are, it's, some of them are so cute, it's just fun just to go watch them. They, they enjoy what they do, and we got some pretty talented people in Wayne County Public School. Some of the older kids, and some of the songs they sing, I'm not, I'm not much of a musician. I don't know a E-flat from a whatever, but I'm telling you, these kids are, these kids are really good. I mean, they do a good job. We've got really good music teachers. So hats off to all of them. Next, he's probably gonna kill me for this, but I, I've got to say, I said I was gonna make a statement about this person, because in all of my years on the board, Ken Dirksen goes the extra mile, I'm telling you, people. He is at a lot of things. He sets up, I mean, Ken Dirksen works very, very hard behind the scenes. He doesn't want any pats on the back. He's probably gonna have a hard conversation with me tomorrow about this. But I'm telling you, I, I really thank, hats off to Ken Dirksen for what he does for Wayne County Public Schools. We all, we all, everybody does a good job. Ken, Ken, you're, you're, you're good. And I appreciate it. And the reason I say that is because when I show up at the choral, the Christmas ensemble the other night, who do I say it's in about? Ken Dirksen. There's some others here there with him helping, but, I mean, he just, he, thank you for what you do. I would like to say, you know, Merry Christmas to each and every one of you and Happy New Year. I know this is our last board meeting until next year. The one thing I would add, I'd like to thank Randy Evans at Grantham Middle School, who's an ag class for the poinsettias. Please, board members, feel free to take one with you. Ms. Burden, you want to take one? And Mia Fullson's, Mia Fullson's tech class also did the ornaments that are attached to, to the poinsettias. So, you know, thank you, Grantham Middle School, and thank you, students and staff, for what you did. And that's all I have. Love, Lewis.
All right. I want to start with a loose end from the agenda we need to tie up. You all missed the board spotlight.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't giving the board spotlight when we cleared it up.
I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna turn the tables on you, 'cause this is a little bit unique. Tonight, it's you guys who are being spotlighted or spotlight, or whatever the appropriate term is for that. The award is just slightly dated, but I do think that it's important that we recognize it. We had a delegation attend the North Carolina School Boards Association Conference the second week in November, and while there, they were presented with sort of a holdover award that we had not been able to get for the last couple of years because the conference had been impacted by COVID. We hadn't been able to get it. So file this under better late than never, and I'll read you what this award is that our board earned and what they did to get it. As Wayne County Public School Superintendent, it's my pleasure to present the following award to the Wayne County Board of Education. This certificate is from the North Carolina School Boards Association in recognition of its 2018-19 Silver Bell Award for Whole Board Training. In order to receive the Silver Bell Award, all of the Wayne County Board of Education members had to successfully meet 12 hours of training during an academy year of the North Carolina School Board Association's Academy of School Boardsmanship. Not all boards receive this. The Silver Bell Award reflects school board members' commitment to professional development and training excellence, and as your superintendent, it's my pleasure to congratulate those of you that were around for the 18-year, 19-year for being a part of that. And I'll challenge everybody else to let's go ahead and get this award again the next chance we get. Okay? So congratulations on that. Good job, guys. We didn't make it to the award tonight.
Well, I've got, I'll have to tell you what.
I know, I know.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll piggyback on the choral showcase. If you want to know what joy looks like, go out and watch an elementary choral group sing Christmas songs in front of 1,000 people at Goldsboro High School Auditorium. And then if you want to know what joy also looks like, turn around and look at their parents, watch them do it. The pride that was in that auditorium that night, it's one of those things where maybe you don't realize how much you missed it until it was gone, but it had been a while since we've been able to have those choral showcases, and so to be able to bring those back was great. It got the holiday season off to a great start. So I appreciate everybody that had a hand in that, and I hope the kids enjoyed it, parents enjoyed it. Last thing I'll close off with, well, I take that back, one more thing I'll insert about Rosewood Middle School. My grandmother, I learned last week, my grandmother was in the first graduating class in that building. And whatever year that was, Dr. Harold, 19, 20, whatever.
24, maybe?
23, 24, something like that, I don't know. You know, so yeah, there's an awful lot of pride that the community has in that school, but I challenge you guys to start thinking about the school, the way maybe we talk about churches sometimes. The church is not the building, it's the people in it. So that Rosewood Middle School is not necessarily that shell of a brick building that we're having a hard time keeping upright. It is the community, it is the graduates, it is the support that is lent to that school. Okay? So we're gonna try to be really good stewards of this $20 million and get every bit of bang for those bucks we can as we, as we look at what to do about Rosewood. And then last, I want to follow up. And then last, I want to follow up a little bit more on the audit, a lot of it's been said, but I'll, I'll tack on, yes, we are, we are very satisfied with the audit findings, the, you know, corrected, 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 corrected. We like seeing that, we like seeing that the debt's paid off, we don't like seeing that the fund balance is zero. The analogy I've been using is we've paid off the credit card, but we still don't have a Stevens account, okay? So there's more work left to be done. The hard work, you know, really is being done in the school buildings, school buildings that had to learn to live with the staff that we could afford to provide them, fewer teachers, fewer instructional assistants, fewer clerical staff, fewer maintenance workers, fewer everything, because we just don't receive enough funds to staff the schools like we'd love to staff the schools. So the hard work really is being done in the buildings, okay? No offense to Leslie, she's got hard work too. But, you know, she kind of lets us know what we can afford to do, and then we, we adapt, we, we adapt. We're continuing to adapt, I think you heard the, the audit report say that we would love to have a fund balance for a district our size somewhere in the $8 to $10 million range, that's going to take us a while. I do not think we're going to be able to set aside close to $6 million this year the way we could last year, because we're back to school, it's more like normal now, activities are up and running, we're not, we're not saving any money because we're unable to do things, we're able to do it all now, and so it's costing us all to do it all now, okay? But that doesn't mean that we can't be frugal, it doesn't mean we can't be efficient and try to hit that fund balance target as quickly as we can without necessarily sacrificing everything in order, you know, along the way. Okay, so, congratulations to everybody that had a hand in that. The other thing I'd say is that those audit findings of corrected, 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 had more to do with policy and procedure, or at least as much to do with policy and procedure as it did with those dollar amounts. Only one of those findings had to do with the fact we had a negative fund balance, the other three that we had to correct were about our policies and our procedures and our protocols. You guys took a lot of time and effort to go through every policy we could throw at you related to finance, figure out what made sense, figure out what needed to change, and then our crew did a nice job of adapting to the policy changes to make sure our procedures were tight. Much appreciated. So if we can keep living within our means, maybe every audit report can be like tonight's audit report. All right? We want more to come on the budget, we're still getting bits and pieces on the budget. We think there's going to be more good news than bad, but there'll be some, there'll be some things we have to overcome in the new budget, but that, that's for another time. Thanks for all you're doing, and I hope all of our school communities have a wonderful holiday break coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, do you have anything?
Happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. And I, before I, before we, before we adjourn, I would like to say, thank you, Ms. Trickle, for your service.
Yes.
You know, I was going to include that in my comments, and then I looked down there and forgot that, but thank you for seven and a half years, and you got another.
Couple months.
Yep, so, thank you. Need a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, I'd like to get some clarity on those bonuses that are supposed to be given out to our employees. Some of them have questioned whether they're getting a bonus in December or whether they're getting it in January.
All right, so there's a sequence of bonuses coming, some are locally developed bonuses using our ESAR funds, others are state-directed bonuses that are a part of the budget that was passed last month. So, the short answer to your question is, in December, we will be paying out the first round, no, no, I'm sorry, the Wellness Day Bonus, the, the Day of Reflection Bonus. November's paycheck already included a retention bonus for those who qualify, they were employed, honored before March 10th, 2020, remain continuously employed with us. In January, we will start to see one additional local retention bonus for those that met the criteria in first semester of this year, plus any other state-funded bonuses that drop by then, and when I say drop, I mean, the money's in our account and we can pay it out. None of the state-level bonus funding has come to us yet. When it does, the folks upstairs will get it turned around and in the next available paycheck as quickly and as efficiently as they can. Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
Yep, more to come.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.